This is a public hearing on a proposal to amend Article 141 of the New York City Health Code regarding drinking water and water tanks. I am Michelle DeFratis-Whiteman, Assistant General Counsel of the New York City Department of Health and Mental Hygiene. Also here today is Christopher Boyd, Assistant Commissioner Bureau of Environmental Sciences and Engineering. The purpose of today's hearing is to elicit public comments and information to assist the Board of Health in determining whether to adopt this proposal. A notice of intention and notice of public hearing regarding this proposal was published in the City Record on March 19th, 2014. A copy of the first page of the notice of intention has been provided to the reporter to include in the record. Persons wishing to speak at this public hearing were asked to preregister. Five people were preregistered to speak today. The first speaker is Scott Hochhauser.
Hochhauser.
Sorry. Okay, you can come up here and speak. You have five minutes.
Do you have any papers or presentations or copies that you want me to take?
No.
Okay.
Good afternoon. Thank you.
So my name is Scott Hochhauser. I'm a principal of Essex Brothers Water Tank Company. It was established in 1890. And it's the oldest, you know, going water tank company in New York City. We have no objection to the general tenor of the proposed amendment. But we think there needs to be some clarification on this issue on a couple of fronts. The wording, and it's not particularly with this amendment, but in general, with Section 141. The wording continually refers to the quoten's, the quote "inspection" of tanks. When what we are really talking about is the cleaning and sanitizing of these tanks. We think that cleaning and inspection should be separate, or at least the inspection needs to be defined more clearly. We think that 14107 should say the annual cleaning of the tanks instead of the inspection of the tanks. Because we're really unclear as to what the description of noncompliance of the inspection is. Is noncompliance of the inspection just not doing the annual cleaning and water test? Or is noncompliance something else? Is noncompliance perhaps that the covers of the tank are in poor condition and allowing, you know, outside matter into the tank? So we do think that needs to be defined. And then secondly, we think that there has to be a more specific detail as to who should be doing the cleaning and the inspecting of these tanks. Right now, it's the tank companies, or people who are licensed to do so specifically, sir, very few, and plumbers. However, if we're talking about inspecting the tank, we're not sure necessarily that the plumbers are qualified to do that. They have no experience foreseeing any dangers in the tank. They don't make repairs or work on tanks. So again, if we're talking about inspection, which is what it currently says, 141, how can a plumber inspect if they couldn't repair the covers? Or if they have never done so? So we think maybe there should be a specific license with requirement of, you know, a certain amount, 10 years, five years, whatever, in the field of working on tanks. Finally, I just want to clarify a couple of recent article statements, et cetera, about the history of tank cleaning compliance. Because I think there have been some things said that were a bit inaccurate. For many years, up until very recently, the regulations for cleaning tanks were on the books but never enforced. I can say this as someone who started the industry in the late 1970s. That enforcement today is infinitely greater than 20 or 30 years ago, or even six years ago. You can't even measure the difference. The current Health Department has jumped on this and done a great job and improved conditions and compliance measurably. Recent article in the New York Times said 60% of the landlords don't comply. Or I believe that right now, over 70% comply. Whereas in the late 70s and early 80s, we were lucky if 5% complied. A lot of that has to do with the fact that the Health Department has started enforcing the cleaning of tanks in the last, you know, two to four years, and there was no enforcement every time prior to that. Finally, as far as the bacteriological tests are concerned, because there was some discussion about that, we have taken probably in the tens of thousands of bacteriological tests or had an outside lab do it, or different labs. And we've found that 99.5% of the tests, if not more, have come back negative, meaning that the water was potable and there was no issue. I know there was some discussion about that, and Mr. Cass of the Health Department said that all the 534 tests they did came back the same way. And I do believe that is very accurate. Where there was some talk, there was a city official who stated that 534 tests over 30 years was insufficient, but like I said, we've done, you know, tens of thousands of tests. And so from that sample, I think it's minimum 99.5% that come back as the water was pumped. And finally, there's never been any outbreak or any issue of sickness traced back to the water tanks. Like say there was a Legionnaires' disease, which was traced back to cooling towers in several situations. The truth is, is that if the tanks are dirty or if the water, if there is an issue, it's usually because the water being pumped into the tanks has a problem. And that either comes from the reservoir, or from the street, or perhaps worked on the street. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Boyd, for your information for the Board of Health. Have a good day.
We're just taking a very quick recess to allow the court reporter to set up. Oh, she's already set up. Great. My colleague, Ms. Whitman, Mrs. New York Counsel, has started this meeting, a public hearing, actually. And I am Bernard Paul Brown, Assistant General Counsel. I am not taking it over at this point. And we just heard from Mr. Hochhauser. And we just heard from Mr. Hochhauser. And we will now hear from Letitia James, public advocate. Ms. James.
My name is Letitia James, New York City Public Advocate, and I'm here today to speak in support of the proposed resolution to amend Article 141 of the Health Code to require building owners to demonstrate compliance with city law requiring annual inspection of water towers. Working together, we must ensure that our water is safe every time it flows from tank to faucet. This proposed amendment to the Health Code is a simple and logical administrative fix to ensure that the water system that is so vital to our city and which we spend so many city resources to secure and transport is as clean and safe as possible. When I took office four months ago, my goal was to use this office to advocate for issues that impact New Yorkers in real and fundamental ways that otherwise would not have a voice or a champion. In these months, I've devoted significant time to advocating for homeless families that would be unfairly kept out of shelters, preserving local hospitals that were jeopardized by the financial interests of real estate developers, and ensuring that each and every child in New York City schools is entitled to a healthy lunch. I testify today because I believe that this issue of water tower safety is one that also requires a voice to ensure the health and safety of all New Yorkers. City law already requires building owners to conduct annual inspection of water towers. But as evidenced in the New York Times article on this issue earlier this year, this rule is largely ignored. In a survey conducted by the city, some 60% of building owners indicated that they do not follow the inspection requirement that includes but is not limited to New York City Housing Authority. This means that the water flowing from taps in more than a majority of buildings with water towers simply do not verify that the water is safe. And although there is no indication that our water is unsafe, the risks are very clear. Surveys conducted in conjunction with the Times article found E. coli and other bacteria that present real risk to human health. In response to reading these reports, I sent a letter to Commissioner Bassett at the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene on January 29th detailing my concerns about the lack of a report or requirement, among other issues. In my view, too much is at stake for us to allow the threat of a minor administrative burden to stand in the way of a safe drinking water. I thank Commissioner Bassett of the Department for considering my input and putting forth the proposed amendment, which would also include public housing. To put this issue in perspective, we as a city have invested billions into the safety of our water. The city has nearly 2,000, it's a 2,000-square-mile watershed that extends roughly 125 miles north and west of the city. The water supply is made up of 19 reservoirs and three controlled lakes. To ensure the safety of this watershed, the city has secured more than 130,000 acres of land in the watershed over the last 15 years. Literally, the entire state of Delaware can fit into our watershed. Opponents of the proposed amendment have argued that this regulation is not necessary because there is no evidence that our drinking water is not safe. If that is the only basis for acting, then I would ask why would we require inspections in the first place? The answer to me is clear. The inspection of our water system is so basic and imperative that the need for inspection is self-evident. In closing, to me, the calculus is simple. We should require building owners to report on annual water tower inspections because the risk of harm is too great and the amount that we spend for clean water is too high. These inspections are already required by law, and simply requiring building owners to report to the city is a minor burden that is clearly justified by its benefit. I thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. James.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
What may be an appropriate segue, I will now call the next person who is registered to speak, a Mr. Eric Goldstein for the Natural Resources Defense Council.
Yeah, Eric.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Eric Goldstein, and I'm an attorney with the Natural Resources Defense Council. NRDC is a national not-for-profit legal and scientific organization that's been active on a wide range of environmental health and natural resource issues for more than four decades. Here in New York City, we have a team of specialists that have long been working on protecting the health and the environmental well-being of city residents, and we've had a particular focus over the last several decades on ensuring the safety of our priceless and irreplaceable drinking water supply. We're pleased to be here today to testify regarding the proposed rule of the New York City Department of Health and Mental Hygiene that would require owners of buildings with rooftop drinking water tanks to report annually to the department on whether such tanks have been inspected in accordance with law. In short, NRDC supports the proposed amendment but believes that significant regulatory gaps remain with respect to protecting water quality in the city's more than 12,000 rooftop water tanks. And we believe that the department and the city council can and should take further action to address this situation. We applaud Frank Runyon and the New York Times for their investigative efforts and for refocusing the spotlight on this issue of longstanding concern. And we welcome the comments of the public advocate on this issue. She's been a longtime friend of the city's environment. In this testimony, we'll make two major points and offer several recommendations for future action. First, it's clear from the public record, from the Times expose, and from NRDC's own review of documents that we obtained from the Health Department in response to a recent Freedom of Information law request, that the Health Department has failed over many years to devote necessary attention to assuring that the city's rooftop water tanks are maintained in a state of good repair. The department's annual reports for 2010, 2011, and 2012 demonstrate that even the city's currently inadequate regulations are not being effectively enforced. For example, the department's field investigations found that 59%, 42%, and 58% of the buildings visited in those years had no proof that their water tanks had been inspected in the previous 12 months. Moreover, the department during those years did not perform actual visible tank inspections or tests even at the very limited number of buildings that field inspectors visited, for the most part. Indeed, the department concedes that it does not even have an accurate record on the number of rooftop water tanks on New York City buildings today. Clearly, ensuring the quality of our rooftop water tanks has been a low priority for the department over time. In its defense, the department maintains that there has been no indication of illness from whatever sanitary or maintenance problems may have been present at rooftop water tanks throughout the city. But independent health experts point out that in a city as dense as New York, it would be almost impossible to link adverse health impacts to water tank degradation unless you had a dramatic localized outbreak of waterborne disease. Nobody wants that to happen. Moreover, the department's position here misses a critical point, and that is the issue of trust. Apartment dwellers need to have confidence in their water supply and faith that city officials are doing everything possible to protect it. It would be most unfortunate if New York, which has long been known for the high quality of its drinking water reservoirs, were to allow this reputation to be jeopardized due to shortcomings in its tank inspection and cleaning rules and by poor tank maintenance from building owners. Second, even with the proposed rule change, that is the subject of today's hearing and which NRDC supports, there would still be gaps and ambiguities in the legal and regulatory framework protecting water quality in rooftop water tanks. For one thing, once water from a public water supply reaches these rooftop tanks, the protective provisions of the Federal Safe Drinking Water Act that cover public drinking water systems no longer apply. That means we need the locality to step in and ensure safety. Second, there does not appear to be any comprehensive design standard for water tanks other than plumbing and fire code provisions in the city's building code. And importantly, while the Health Department has publicly stated that in addition to inspections, water tanks must be drained and cleaned on an annual basis, the current Health Department rules are ambiguous on this key point. That's a point that was made by our first speaker today. And finally, there's the question of whether epoxy is commonly used to repair tanks in city water, to repair leaks in city water tanks are permissible under law. Accordingly, we urge the Health Department to take action on the following items concurrently with its existing proposal. And in the event the department fails to act, we urge the city council to once again take up the cause. Here are our recommendations. First, the department should clarify in its regulations so as to specifically require that the annual draining and cleaning of all rooftop tanks is required. And building management should be directed to submit evidence of such cleaning along with the information regarding proof of annual inspections called for in the proposed rules. Second, the department should assign staff to perform random visual inspections and to collect samples for independent testing of water quality in rooftop water towers on an ongoing basis, and to include the results of such inspections and testing in its annual report to the city council and to the public so as to verify the quality of the information the department receives from property owners and building managers. Third, the department should work with the Buildings Department and other relevant agencies to develop and propose comprehensive design standards for city water tanks so that, once adopted, all new city water tanks will comply with uniformed design guidelines that fully protect water within these tanks from contamination. And fourth, the department should retain a qualified environmental health consultant to assess the situation with respect to the epoxies used to repair water tanks and to prepare a report for the city council, subject to peer review, which assesses the extent to which such epoxies pose health risks and whether the use of such epoxies by water tower maintenance companies is consistent with law. We know the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene shares NRDC's view that the city, which has long prided itself on the high quality of its upstate reservoir system, should continue to take every reasonable step to assure its citizens that they are receiving clean and wholesome drinking water from their building water towers. We stand ready to work with the department and its new leadership team to address these issues and to resolve them sensibly. We look forward to working with you and the city council in the months to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goldstein. The next registered speaker is Roman Pazniak, and forgive me if I've mispronounced her name.
You actually pronounced it just right.
Thank you. You are, sir, with the NYU Environmental Law Clinic?
Yes.
Thank you.
My name is Roman Pazniak. I am a second-year law student at the New York University School of Law, and I am participating in the school's environmental law clinic. In this capacity, I have reviewed information on rooftop water storage tanks that the NRDC obtained under the Freedom of Information law. The information provided by the department reveals gaps in enforcement. Most importantly, the department only verifies whether a tiny fraction of buildings comply with the Health Code, which mandates yearly inspections and bacteriological testing. The department does not know how many rooftop water towers currently exist in New York City, but it is estimated there are between 12,000 and 17,000 towers. In response to the NRDC's FOIL request, the department admitted, quote, "There is no database of such information." Data regarding yearly inspections, cleaning, and repairs of rooftop water towers is not reported to the department and is therefore known to us, the department, only through inspections of documents maintained by building managers. Each year, the department inspects only approximately 100 buildings. Of the few buildings that are inspected, the majority have apparently not complied with the Health Code. Building owners or managers are apparently required to undertake inspections and cleaning of water towers annually, maintain records of inspections and cleaning for the past five years, and post notice to tenants that the records are available on demand. Most buildings fail to comply with at least one of these requirements. For example, in 2011, 59% of all buildings reviewed were found in violation of the Health Code provision mandating annual bacteriological testing. And 75% of buildings were found in violation of the Health Code provision requiring that buildings post-public notice. Unfortunately, the records provided in response to NRDC's FOIL request for 2012 were incomplete as only records for 22 buildings were received. For 2013, the records only indicate that most buildings are not complying with the posted notice requirements. The records also indicated that the fines levied upon noncompliant building owners have apparently been lenient for the most part. Building owners can be fined as little as $200 to as much as $2,000 for each violation. It is not clear from the records whether the department would follow up with noncompliant building owners to ensure that they begin following the New York Health Code. Furthermore, the department's inspection process appears to have been inadequate. In response to the NRDC's request for documents related to complaints and requests for information, the department stated that in the past three years, it has only been aware of two complaints referencing rooftop water tanks. However, of the records of the complaints provided to the NRDC, only one of them was from the past three years, 2013, while there have also been 10 complaints from 2008. The records relating to the inspections performed by the department employees in 2012 reveal that there were a number of complaints about water quality. For example, at 60 East 54th Street in Manhattan, the customer complained about drinking brown water and experiencing upset stomach. The department never tested the water or seemed to have determined the cause, but merely said that the, quote, "Water is much better now," end quote. At 120 Alcott Place, the water was dark and had a weird smell, but the department determined that the problem was resolved when the, quote, "Water condition was better," end quote. At 130 Moore Street, the complainant claimed to be sick from the water, but the department simply contacted him and convinced him to acknowledge that it was probably a virus and never sought to determine whether the water had been problematic. At 560 West 43rd Street, there was a complaint that the rooftop water tank had greenish-brown water and that there were particles in it. This problem was, quote-unquote, "resolved" because a new tank was installed, although the permanent cover had not yet been installed. The inspection findings did not address the off-colored water. A second matter of concern is that many New York City potable water storage tanks are repaired using apparently unauthorized epoxies and sealants. The NRDC's request for records about the epoxies used in rooftop water storage tanks that contained potable water was answered with a collection of emails exchanged with New York Times reporters who wrote the report about the lax enforcement of New York City's rooftop water towers. The department declined to provide the NRDC with 50 email messages with 31 attachments that it classified as, quote-unquote, "intra-agency communications," end quote. Therefore, the only information the FOIL request was able to secure was confirmation that the use of the commonly-used C. goan epoxy is not one of the approved substances for use in water storage containers. From the information provided, it does not appear as though any building owners or inspection and repair companies were issued violations for the use of unapproved epoxies. The regulations that are proposed deal with some, but not all, of these issues. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today.
Thank you, Mr. Pazniak. And the next registered speaker is Harvey Klein, Garden State Laboratories. Mr. Klein.
My name is Harvey Klein.
My apologies.
I have my Bachelor of Science degree in food science from Penn State University, my Master of Science degree in environmental sciences from Rutgers University. I'm the laboratory director of Garden State Laboratories. Garden State Labs is a NILAC-accredited laboratory. We are certified by the states of New Jersey, New York, and Pennsylvania. I am a member of the American Society for Microbiology, the American Chemical Society, among other groups. I sit on the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection/Environmental Laboratory Advisory Committee. I have served as chair of that committee four times in the past approximately 20 years. And I sit on the Standard Methods Committee. Standard Methods is the manual which generates a great deal of the chemical and bacteriological water analytical procedures, including procedures which we're discussing today. I have a photograph of a person who you may or may not know. I will show it to the people in the back. This person was a pediatrician in the 1800s. In the 1880s, he went to a cholera outbreak in Naples, Italy, and he discovered a bacteria which was common at that time. He called it the bacterium coli commune, which means a common bacteria that's found in the colon of people. In the 20th century, in honor of his work, the bacteria was named after him. This is Dr. Theodore Escherich, Eschwechia coli, which was our This is Dr. Theodore Escherich-Eshwikiyakoli, which has already been mentioned here today, or E. coli is named after this pediatrician. E. coli is an indicator of fecal contamination, and when found in water can, of course, indicate the fecal-oral vector. E. coli is part of the larger total coliform group of bacteria and is the primary bacteriological test in drinking water. And this is the test that is being referred to in Section 141. The U.S. EPA on the federal level regulates total coliform, and we are currently in the process of undergoing a revision of the federal total coliform rule. The current regulations have been in effect since approximately the early 1990s. The new revised total coliform rule will become fully effective as of April 1st, 2016. And currently, having even total coliform in drinking water can be considered an exceedance. The new rule is revising that, and now the presence of E. coli specifically will be considered a legal exceedance in public water systems. In addition to the total coliform/E. coli groups of bacterium, I would also recommend considering a test known as the standard plate count. It's also known as the heterotrophic plate count, and it's a general bacterial count per 1 milliliter of water. The total coliform and E. coli tests are per 100 ml. 100 ml is about a half a cup of water. 1 milliliter is about 20 drops. The U.S. EPA has been recommending, and I concur, that the standard for the standard plate count should not exceed 500 organisms per milliliter. In the state of New Jersey, where disinfection of certain types of surface water and groundwater systems are required, and the monitoring of a disinfectant, which is usually chlorine, is required, if chlorine or disinfectant is not found, the standard plate count can be used to indicate disinfection. So although the standard plate count does not have the same legal maximum contaminant level as total coliform and E. coli, it is a good indicator of the disinfection or the sanitary condition of water systems, including water tanks. The standard plate count is a good indicator of bacterial growth, and bacteria can grow when chlorine or other disinfectants dissipate over time, and, of course, this can occur in holding tanks. It is my opinion that bacteriological reports and other inspection reports should be sent to the New York City Department of Health and Mental Hygiene. In New Jersey, certified laboratories send directly to the NJDEP for both public water systems, or analytical reports for both public water systems, and Private Well Testing Act reports, which occur when a home with a well is being sold. And certified labs also send to either local or regional health departments recreational bathing water reports. This one includes swimming pools, whirlpools, lakes, and beaches. In many cases, it is the certified laboratory's responsibility to send the results directly to the responsible government authority. In this case, we're talking about the New York City Health Department. I strongly recommend that all certified laboratory data be delivered electronically, that means by a computer, and submitted to the appropriate authority along with whoever the client is. Typically, these are PDF files or Excel spreadsheets. I showed you a photograph before of Dr. Theodore Escherich. Here is a photograph, which I took in Paris, France, of a more famous person, the great Louis Pasteur. This photograph was taken at the Pasteur Institute in Paris, France. Louis Pasteur, probably one of the most famous scientists. Louis Pasteur created much of the start of modern bacteriology. He is quoted, "Chance favors only the prepared mind." I agree with that. Thank you for allowing me to address this hearing. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to try and help.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. My colleague may have mentioned at the outset that this is essentially an opportunity for the public to express their views on the proposal, and it's not necessarily an interactive forum.
Right.
So I'll decline. Thank you.
Thank you. I support the concept of reporting all data.
Thank you. All right. We have reached the end of our registered speakers. If there is anyone else who would like to register to speak, we would be happy to entertain their thoughts. If not, it is approximately 2:36, and we will adjourn for approximately, until approximately 3:45, at which time, if there is anyone who appears and wishes to speak, we will be happy to entertain their views. If there are no other speakers who wish to speak at this moment, then I will adjourn accordingly. Thank you. We're back on the record. I'm Permin Dhrapal Rana, Assistant General Counsel. This public hearing on the proposed amendment, Article 141, was adjourned until this time. It is now 3:50. I am not aware of anyone who has registered or expressed an interest to speak. Accordingly, I will adjourn this meeting until 4:00 p.m., at which time, if no one has appeared to speak, I will then conclude the public hearing. Okay, so we're adjourned for about 10 minutes. Thank you. Okay. Permin Dhrapal Rana here, Assistant General Counsel, New York City Department of Health and Mental Hygiene. The time is now 4:00 p.m. There are being no persons present who wish to speak or have otherwise notified us that they wish to speak. This public hearing is now concluded. I thank you. Thank you.